The March 4th, 2020 Special Budget and General Purpose Voting Meeting at the Carleton School District Boarding Directors is called order. Chris is here, the lucky guy in the front row. Would you like to make some questions?
My pleasure.
The Agents of the Five, United States of America, and to your public religious stance, one nation, one God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Secretary, please call the roll.
Director Frank.
Here.
Director Schreiber.
Here.
Director Zalinski.
Here.
Director Russo.
Here.
Director O'Brien.
She is not able to be here tonight.
Director Mendoza.
I'm here.
Director Sinseg.
Here.
Director Hunter.
He might be running late.
Okay. And Director Apple.
He will be running late. So I'll report that we, actually before I do that, before I report anything, I will turn to the audience. Are there any questions about agenda items that anyone in the audience has tonight? Nope. Then I will report that the next section plans for after this meeting where we'll talk about student matters, personnel matters, and negotiations.
Dr. Craig. Just a brief report. One thing I forgot to mention last time was we had, at Carnegie Elementary School, we had a living wax museum with our fourth grade students. That was led by teacher Julie Lewis, and the kids did a fantastic job. They went through and they had featured individuals such as Houdini, Einstein, Amelia Earhart, Harry and Tubman. And it was really neat. The kids made little things. You walked up, you pressed a fake button, and they went through and they did their spiel, gave some historical facts about each of those figures. It was a great thing. I compliment Ms. Lewis on taking a risk. It was the first time that the school had done that, and it turned out terrific. It was great. We also had several of our students went through last night at the Shasta Student Forum. The Shasta Student Forum, our students presented about sustainability and their project, through project-based learning. That was in partnership with Cavestro. And then we also had our bocce competition today, and that was done through the Special Olympics. And please report, our students finished second. They did an outstanding job, made it to the finals. They came down to the last ball, and as the last ball, it just came a little bit short, and so they didn't make it on, they didn't get the championship. But the kids had a great time. Transportation out and back was fantastic event for our kids.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the Personnel section of our meeting. I undertake a motion to approve three items. Number 3.1, motion to approve the letter of intent to retire as submitted by high school teacher Lisa Rowley, effective the last day of the 2019-2020 school year, per the terms of the Carleton Federation of Teachers' Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. 3.2, letter of intent to retire submitted by Carnegie elementary teacher Cynthia Bevan, effective the last day of the 2019-2020 school year, per the terms of the CFT Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. And number 3, letter of intent to retire submitted by gifted education teacher Mary Pharoah, effective the last day of the 2019-2020 school year, and per the terms of the Early Retirement Incentive Memorandum of Understanding between the district and the Carleton Federation of Teachers' Collective Bargaining Unit Agreement. Have a motion for those three items.
Sound.
Go to the second. Second, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and a big congratulations to three teachers who have served the district a long time. We appreciate their service. Under Section 4, we have a budget discussion slated. Dr. Craig, do you want to kick that off?
Yeah. Purpose of this meeting was to build a bit more into depth with our budget coming up for the upcoming school year 2021. Directors Russo's and Frank have a little bit of a presentation to share with the board and the public, and I'll turn it over to Director Russo.
That's come my phone. I could have read the screen from back there, so I'll move up. Alright, so this started with asking the question of what of our fund balance can we prudently use this year, given that we've had a history of deficits? How we've used it, and what we need in terms of contingencies and reserves, et cetera. So Jude and I worked together to try to come up with some basic answers that need to be, quite basic answers that need to be answered, in order to get to that number. Alright, so where is the district historically, as we all know? A lot of this stuff, we all know, we may have seen it, we would have seen it several months ago. We typically run deficits where current expenditures exceed the current revenues, and then we need to rely on the fund balance to cover that difference. A continuous use of fund balance like that will eventually deplete the fund balance. That's pretty obvious. We've got challenges ahead. We've got facility investment, the jump step, and we've got these ongoing operating deficits that we need to consider as we try to look going forward as to how we're going to be using not just the current funds that we have coming in, but the fund balance as well. We're here for the kids. We use our resources, our assets as best we can to provide them the best educational experience. So we need to try to, we need to in fact, not try, we need to in fact, transition away from regularly using the fund balance. We need to, and we do that, because we've been doing that for a number of years. We've had a couple of years where we were in the surplus, but the historical trend is always relying on it. To do this, we do have to maintain a certain amount of the fund balance, a responsible amount to cover contingencies or certain reserves. And we'll define that, look at that, come up with those amounts later on in this. And then just frankly, just develop budgets that aren't relying on the fund balance, where current revenues are what we use to cover current expenditures. Long-term approach to this, plan for foreseeable spending. We have known expenditures that we're going to have to incur over the next five years. Let's identify those. Let's quantify those. We know that there are going to be unforeseen expenditures. It's like knowing when you don't know. But we need to make an estimate, make a calculation as to what we think based on historical data. This is all data-driven. What we need to reserve to cover ourselves going into the future. Keeping zero on our fund balance is basically saying we're never going to have an emergency, and we know that's not the case. But we don't need to keep millions and millions and millions of dollars in our fund balance expecting the absolute worst, because that's not likely going to be the case either. You know, what's the expression? You don't, a church doesn't build a parking lot for Christmas and Easter. So we don't need to pile away money for the absolute worst scenario. If that happens, we deal with it. But we deal with most likely it's going to be accounted. And then, you know, to the extent that we do have some expenditures that come down the line, we can look at additional sources of funding, we can look at debt for capital projects. We're not really going to get so much into that, but those are options that we would have for something like that. So how should the fund balance be used? Mentioned before, known, known items. The big one we're looking at is capital expenditures. And over the next five years, we're seeing that we're going to have about $662,000 worth of known expenditures. Things that need to be done for capital facilities. Jude and I had met some time ago with Dennis, and Dennis is going to get into the details of some of this stuff in a moment. And that's how this number was deratively developed. In fact, you guys all have a sheet showing this calculation. We'll discuss it. Maybe you feel there's too much there or not enough there, but that's where that number comes from. Reserve for the unknown, there's two things there. One is capital, again, because we know we have, for example, 1.7 or 7.5 million dollar roof on the high school we're going to have to do. But by spending 30 grand in the next five years, we can hold that off. So that's still out there. It's still something we're going to have to deal with eventually. But we, and so we reserve for it, because what if that roof, there are issues with it, we have to spend it within the next five years. Or have to do further work to mitigate putting it off for outside the five-year period. And then the budget contingency, that's just looking at where historically we've been with expenditures and revenues, and what do we need to keep in our fund balance to protect us for an emergency. So the transition plan, let's use what we have, use what's available after we've reserved for these amounts to eliminate annual reliance on the fund balance. Do it over time. How can I do it in one year? This is a five-year plan. But the idea is that the end of five years, we have in our fund balance, the minimum balance that we've determined we need to have, whatever that might be, we've got our own analysis here that may get developed further or changed. Now, this analysis, this work is something that is not etched in stone. It's ongoing. It's fluid. And as we get better data, more information, and come up, we may change our priorities, this will change as well. But based on what we know now, where our priorities are now, what the numbers are now, this is what we're looking at. So, but now, all of this, we rely on our director of facilities. That's when he makes the big bucks. Necessary capital expenditures of the next five years. So, on its wagon renovations, sidewalk repair, carpet and crafting, mitigation is the larger item. Those are the four big items, and then there are a bunch of other smaller items. Again, you have that list. Dennis is going to go over them. But then we also have additional capital expenditures, most likely can be delayed outside this period. They total up to almost 5.5 million dollars. So at this point, Dennis, I'll turn to you, if you want to step through that list a bit and ask Dennis questions, try to understand, as Jude and I have done, what they're for, why they're needed, if it's enough, or whatever, because this will help us. We want the best numbers possible to do this analysis, so this helps tighten that number and gives us greater confidence in it. So I'll turn to Dennis.
If we look on that list, we'll start with the high school chiller. We did do the chiller when we did the energy renovation. It's going to be replaced. It's 22 years old right now. I think we can put some repairs into it, make it last over the last few next five years. That's how we broke this down, what we can do, what needs to be done within the five years, and what we can push down the road for other needs down the road here. Unit bench, once again, it's probably replacing a couple of them, not all of them, and it costs about $6,000. And as you go down this list, the roof mitigation, 30,000 to put into it right now, that's repairing seams. Certain areas this year, I wanted to do this wing right here, and some repairs on the swimming pool area. It's like a lake up there, so we're going to put some drainage up there. But as we go along with different sections, we keep this roof from leaking down into the school here. And then eventually, we have to redo this whole roof, because once again, the roof is 22 years old here too. So the rubber is actually in pretty good shape, but the seams are ripping up in different places. So we're going to have to repair them to keep the extended life of it. The carpet replacements at the elementary schools, they need to, we need to replace the carpeting over in both buildings. Some of the carpeting in there has reached the end of its life. As you go down here, concrete replacement at the high school wing, at the elementary schools, we need to replace a lot of the concrete. It's breaking up and busting away for safety issues. Some stage repairs at Crafton Elementary School, the air handler unit in the gymnasium wasn't replaced when they did the renovations with the AC over there, and it's on its last leg too, so that's going to need to be replaced down in the gym down there. So then, you know, there's some playground repairs on here. Homeswider scoreboard, we're looking into getting some people who invest in that for us. So that might be some money that we don't have to spend. But that is an item that we need to look at this year, because that school was on its last leg. So, and then crafting playground asphalt repairs, replacement of that, that's something that's in really bad shape, the small playground over there. Stage repairs here, we're going to absorb some of that this year. And then the big item, another big item on this list is Homeswider Stadium renovations. We've all been down there. We know that visitor bleachers, we don't want to make a decision on that, whether we want to remove them or, you know, remove and replace them, or just remove them totally.
Or repair.
Repair. I mean, they're beyond repair. I think that would be sinking bad money. I mean, good money and a bad idea.
And what the reports were getting on.
Yeah, the inspections on them, I mean, they're in really bad shape.
It'd probably be smart to tear them down this year and then look at putting them back up.
Yeah, if we want to do solid, we'll get rid of them. Yeah, and then the home side, and doing some repairs on the home side, painting it. The press box needs some upgrades on it. And then looking at paving the walkways down into the restrooms, make the restrooms handicap accessible. So once we touch that, if we get into that, we're going to have to turn that, make that stadium media compliant. So that's a big item there. So that's on the first list. The second part of it is as you go down, look at this, that's, these are items that are, you know, staring us in the face that we need to do in our buildings. Window replacements at the elementary schools. The high school roof replacement here. Carnegie's auditorium needs some renovation. Up here at the high school, these renovations, floors. I mean, the list goes on and on as you go down here. So as we get down further in the five years, this is definitely making a decision how you want to tackle those renovations.
But Dennis, to be clear, so that bottom list though, what we're saying is that we can, based on what we know right now, we can push that out. We don't necessarily, we don't necessarily have to do that in the next five years.
Correct.
There's a possibility we might, but
Right.
Based on, it's more likely that we can push it out than not.
Right, we can push it down a little bit, down around here some, do some repairs to them. Like the windows, I paint them, you know, concrete windows at Crafton, maybe painting the front windows in that building, replacing all the screens. Small repairs like that can extend the life of a lot of this. So, but want to make you aware that these are the renovations as we go along, that these will be done with the buildings. Any other questions on it? Any of this? I know people have gone forth for, I think, we're aware, the place to be done is.
To your point, Dennis, about folks have been on for a while, we've, some of us have looked at this list for a couple of years, and we have appreciated the approach you've taken in bringing us all the things that you legitimately think need to be done. And then we've sometimes said to you, okay, you have a pool of 100 things you want to do. We can only pay for 70 of them. And you've gotten really creative about getting the 70 done, and getting them done well. And nine times out of 10, it's really, we've been able to stretch our capital dollars or our facility dollars way beyond what we might have thought we could. So a huge kudos to you and the team for getting as much out of the dollars that we've given you in the last couple of years. My impression is that you can't do that forever. You can only stretch things so long until things start to become prime. I don't know if on any one item, if we've reached that point. I think your approach to the roof is an awesome idea. The rubber itself is solid. We need to fix the seams and figure out a way to Band-Aid that perhaps. That could get you five years, and that could be a significant saving. So my personal opinion, I tend to be a little more conservative about this, is that there might be some things on this list that we can take that approach again without damaging ourselves long-term, but there's some other things that we may not be able to. So I accept the premise, and I accept the list as is, but I would again say to us, that, I guess more to the administration, that there might be some areas here where we're coming down to tight decisions in a couple of months, that we do have an opportunity.
As you start with concrete.
Right.
You've definitely put some concrete that has been bad, and we've been able to stretch one or two sections out in another couple of years, and that's helped stretch dollars. So there's other ways that we might be able to get creative.
Right.
But we can't do it forever.
Yeah, right. Can't do it forever. There's some areas, as they get in such bad condition, it becomes a safety, a safety.
And we don't want that.
Yeah, we don't want that. You know, I would say we're just about there with the concrete here in the pool area. There's that area needs to be, you know, really looked at, and your playground and crafting, small playground over at Crafton Elementary School. We've probably reached the life of that. I mean, the cracks in there are probably, they're getting at least 10 inches wide. You know, 2 inches deep, 3 inches deep. And if, to go in there and try and repair that, I think it's just a waste of time. So as it becomes a safety issue, I think we need to take a look at that. But if we can repair it and make it last longer, I'm always, I'm always game for that, to stretch the goal as far as we can at right now. So.
I just wanted to, kind of think some table.
Well, I think you're getting a good point, and I can tell you, the conversation that Jude and I had with Dennis and I think Chris and Joe were there also, that's exactly the stuff we were pressing on them, because we were trying to see with that, whatever we had to spend in capital in other areas, what's the number?
And this was. This is a fair starting point.
Yeah, and that's kind of, I think that was the basis for why we split the capital expenditures into two groupings. So there's one where that's maybe less likely, and then the other one, it's highly probable we can do that with each one of these things, so let's not treat them the same.
We started with a list that was over $6 million. And challenging him, you know, it's like, well, I can do this on the roof. They'll put it off. Get it outside in five years, so. And again, you said earlier, this is an evolving, fluid thing, so.
Yeah, there might, yeah, there might be other items that come up, and hey, you know. The asphalt's going away. We've got to address this now. I mean, what we last did, we had two water mains break, gas line break. Sinkhole happened at Carnegie, I mean, that was probably almost $100,000.
Yes.
You know, items that happened that we never, never expected. So the items that they come up, that we need to dress right away, and some of this does, gets moved back more further.
Replacing doors on a, in the fire, and that's terrible, because it's fire safety agenda for the leave them. So that's 15 grand, so.
Right.
Like that.
Alright. Any other questions? If anyone has any questions on this list, just email me or call me. I'll provide, talk about it all. Alright, thanks, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
Alright, so yeah, these are the known items. And basically, it is those items, those capital items, then the foreseeable, okay, and you can look at the sidewalk and say, yeah, it's got to get fixed. It can't wait five years for it. Can't wait five years for it. So that's, that becomes part of the 5.5 million dollar number. Then there is the unknown, and this is where Jude stepped in with his expertise and his risk analysis, which he, I guess, does a lot of his work. So at this point, I'll turn over to Jude to go through the unknown, the contingency parts here.
Yeah, so I guess we can talk about the first bullet there, about, you know, a lot of school districts, I think it's common to reserve, to kind of try to have between 3% and 8%, or 3% and 10% of your budget in your fund balance. But that's kind of simplistic and not particularly, you know, there's not a clear basis for it. And so we wanted to get away from that, and especially to try to figure out, you know, if we don't need to have 3% or 2% in our budget, in the fund balance, then let's not do that. Let's give ourselves as much money in order to smooth that transition over the next five years to a balanced budget. That was kind of the thought process behind it. So that capital expenditure contingency, that second list of projects that was the 5.5 million dollars. What we wanted to do is say, figure out, okay, how much do we need to save or set aside for the next five years to cover any of those eventualities? So 5.5 is obviously too much. So what do we, how do we, what are we going to do? So what we did is we kind of took the list and then come, take it into account, the probability that one of those would happen. And then even if it happens, that doesn't mean we have to spend the full amount. So like a roof, if we have to replace the roof, we're not paying for the roof out of our fund balance. We'll probably take that alone. So your actual cost during that time period is not going to be the 1.7 million dollars. It's going to be whatever your bond payment or whatever your funding mechanism was during that period of time. So you've got a probability of the event happening, and then what that cost, you know, could be. And so we ran that through Monte Carlo Out Risk, which is a Monte Carlo program. And it applies those against the probability distribution to then come up with what, depending on what the probability of the events, like all of those events happening, what's the, when you distribute all of them, what's the probability that it'll happen? And how much money would you need for that probability? And so we came up with, you know, from P0 to P98. And that $335,000 is what the 5.5 million dollars becomes when you look at a P50.
And P50, again, Jude, is?
That is, so it's the median of the probabilities, the median of the probability distribution. So it's, there's a 50% chance that you could exceed that, and there's a 50% chance that you could, it would be lower than that.
So that was on the capital.
That's right. So that's what we did with the capital. And then with the budget, we took the last five years of budgets, and we compared the difference between what was budgeted and what the actual was. And then we went line by line and kind of grouped them into smaller categories based on the combination of the weight. So how much was it, and what's the variance, the consistent over time, was that variance? Like, does it, over the five years, has it generally been looking 5%, with the 20%, 30%? And then what's the weight of that? So we're not combining something that's $10,000 with something that's $2 million. And so we created subcategories with that, and then we only looked at the last two years to see what that difference between the budget, so budget and, and actual results was. And then if there was a trend, we kind of followed the trend, or if there was a huge anomaly, we kind of took that into account. And we did the same kind of risk analysis running through Monte Carlo in order to basically look at what's, if you do that with revenue and you do it with expenditures, what's the difference between the two out of P50? And that's where we got to that $428,000.
Which is significantly less than the 900 if you're using, for example, you know, and 3% and 10% aren't etched in stone. I just know from policies that I've seen, where not every policy has had a vision, where it's objective of the board to see to it that its fund balance is this, or it shall never go below this. But that's the lowest number I've ever seen. So this, part of this was Jude's effort here, was to say, can we, can we get it down to something over the limit? So the total risk then of these two comes to the 763, 485. And that's, that's the number then to watch as we go forward here. So this is the budget for the current year. This is what we passed last spring. And it started with a fund balance. This fund balance number actually is not what we had budgeted, because we've had an audit. And we know now exactly what our fund balance was as of July 1, 2019. This is what we budgeted. That's for revenues, for expenditures. We also know that, we also know that we, due to Chris's efforts, we've seen some savings in the area of the bus contract with, that was what we have understood from you, Chris, that's what you're putting the savings at right now. I mean, it's kind of like, sometimes, but that's a good number. Sorry?
I said it can fluctuate with any, uh, foster, no, less.
But well, but for purposes of this, that's a, in order to.
Is that a P50 number?
Not quite, but I think, I think worst-case area, we should be in that ballpark.
Worst-case. Okay. I mean, it's a number we, that you provided us. That's why we put it in. So I get the actual revised budget number, expenditure. I didn't touch it, just.
Listen.
You're about to edit. So you can see the expenditure budget number is adjusted. So this number here for the deficit is actually $150,000 less than the 7.11 that was budgeted. That gets for a fund balance that we're projecting based on these budgeted numbers of a little over 2.5 million dollars. That's what we have then, at least at this point in time, what we're projecting that we have, as we go forward to develop the budget for 2021. So how do we allocate that 2.5 million? We started with known and unknown contingencies, right? We looked at 650 aside, just for stuff that we're saying we know we're going to have to do in the next five years. And then when we look at contingencies for the bigger, longer-range capital items, as well as operating differences, a contingency for that, that number came to the 763. So with those two, we start with those two numbers. That has to be provided for out of the 2.5 million. The analysis we then go through makes a couple of what I call assumptions. The first assumption with regard to revenue is, we're going to assume for purposes of this exercise, that revenue will increase each year at the same rate it's including going from '19, '20 to 2021. Now, that is probably, my sense is, an optimistic number, given the fact that our index is on the higher side. Our index has been this high, but typically, would you agree, Chris, that on average, we're not at 3.2?
No, it hasn't been a 3.2.
So it's a little, it's a little hopeful, which makes, it provides more money for us in this analysis for our transition. And then on the expenditure number, and we're going to use this percentage for revenue each year. Now, it may vary. It's going to vary, and that's why every year you've got to adjust, but we don't know if it's going to go up and down year to year. So we have to just assume it's going to be there. On the expenditure side, we're making an assumption that we're going to hold it steady as well. This is before the jump step increase, because we know that's a big wild card. It's going to move the numbers. So we're not going to expect that every year it's got to absorb the full amount of the jump step out of its. jump step out of its allocated increase. We provide for that first and then allocate the rest of it, the rest of the money that's available evenly. But that means we're looking at a 2.2411 increase in expenditures. That difference between the two has to make up for what we have been budgeting in terms of deficits. So, and expenditures are limited, therefore, to the revenues that are available. That is, the current expenditures and the allocated fund balance. So we're starting off by saying, this is what you, we have to spend, as opposed to saying, this is what we're gonna spend and where we get the money. We're recognizing that revenues are not infinite, that they are finite, a finite amount, and we're trying to define what that finite amount is in each of the years. So, doing this over five years, we get a nice smooth transition. Getting to the point where we've got the 763, what that number is that we've decided, you know, we're setting that needs to be the minimum contingency provided for, and that expenditures, current expenditures are not exceeding current revenues. So the way this looks then is, there's that fund balance that we're projecting at the end of this current year, June 2012, at 5.5 million. The known capital we talked about, that's the first number that Dennis talked about, that's the 662. So we gotta provide for that. And by doing that now, we're saying, these capital items aren't gonna be a part of the expenditures each year, because they're being allocated, they're being covered with this allocation. That provides a fund balance after this reserve for capital of just under 1.9 million. We have the two contingencies we talked about, that's the 763. We put that aside as well. What that leaves is an amount that's in excess of the minimum contingency we need to provide for, and the 650 for known capital expenditures we need to spend in the next five years. This is the amount we have available to use collectively over the next five years. Again, going with the plan to get to current revenues, current expenditures being standard five years from now. So that's, that's how much we have. So in year one, that's this year, and you see 2.5, less 662, there's a 3.8, 71. The revenue number, that's what we have budgeted right now, this 29858, that's what the current, the current number is in terms of what we're proposing. So, this amount is calculated by realizing the difference between what was budgeted last year and what's been budgeted, being budgeted now, so we're saying. And the $1 million increase in revenues is what we're gonna expect, and we're gonna expect that each year, something in that range. The expenditure number is not what we budgeted, because we've got to make adjustments there. So we start with what last year was. There's that increase I talked about. And then, we have a step increase number. That step increase number is based on a calculation that was done earlier. That should be looked at and revised as well, all these numbers, constantly looked at and revised. So they're, they're most up to date and really up to date. But based on that analysis, we come up with, this is what we have for, for expenditures, and we will need this amount, 442, from our fund balance to make things balance. That's less than the 908 that it is right now. So, there's the quadrant. Of course, if we use 908, we have a million one to use, that 200,000 has got to make up that difference down the line. So, okay, so there's where we are now with year one. Year two, fund balance, and this, of course, is, we've already taken out the 662,000 for capital, right? So this, this amount can't go below 663. Or at least, it can't be below that at the end of year five, that's the goal. Sorry if I keep getting in the way. Previous year revenue, there's that increase of 3.4057. New revenue for the year, same on the expenditure side, with an increase in expenditures of 2.2411. And there's the step increase. This is how much we need for fund balance that year. It stops them. We're getting...
What's the step increase again?
The step increase, the jump step increase is...
Oh, that's a jump step.
Yeah. And again, we recognize that about a quarter of our teachers over the next three or four years are gonna hit the jump step increase, and that's an increase in their salary of 42,000, 40, whatever the, something like that. So, that's a significant, it's unusual for that many, it's not typical for that many teachers in so short a period of time to hit it. And that's due to the fact that 13 years ago, we hired a lot of people. And we've been reaping the benefits of having a large population of folks under the step. And now, we're gonna be paying for that by having a large population of folks at the step, to cycle through.
David, quick clarification. So those step increases numbers are actual numbers of the number?
These are numbers, these are, these are, yes. I would, I would say they should be reviewed regularly.
Things change, but...
Yeah, but they, this was, what I did there was I looked at who was due, who hit superannuation. In other words, who is eligible now for full retirement? And with that, eligible for the full retirement incentive that's available in the contract, I'm assuming when someone hits that, and not everybody does this, but when someone hits that, they're gonna retire. This is also net of, 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 well, it's net of those retirements. So the retirements are where we're gonna see decreases. The jump sale that we're talking about, where are we looking? We just say, okay, 13 years from now, here you are, so you're hitting the jump this year, you're hitting the jump. But it's net of those retirements, it took the gun, that's something, okay. So, year three now. Start up with a fund balance of 1,160, previous year, the increase at the same percentage. There's expenditures, same, I mean, there's total revenue, same with expenditures, but you can see the step increase, it's huge, it's over half a million. And that's because there were a lot of teachers hired 14, 13, 14 years prior to this day. So we need to use more fund balance, so it's gone up from 200 something that year, it's gonna be 446. You'll also see that what we have left in the fund balance is below 763. It's not what we want as a regular rule, but we're gonna, under this suggested approach, we're gonna deal with it right now, because again, the goal is at the end, if year five, we are in excess of the 763, and we're balanced. Year four, start off at 714, same percentages, same increases, the jump is only 81, but we still need to use some fund balance. The balance and the fund balance drops even further. But I was hoping these two years, things don't hit fair. But then, in year five, again, with the same increases, everything following the same, we've got a surplus. And that surplus gets the fund balance up above that 763, and we are now in a situation, we're not relying on the fund balance, and we're at that balance. So, this, this is an approach, you know, as I said at the beginning, the whole idea here was, how do we, how do we have a plan for using the fund balance instead of just burning through it and hoping for the best? So what questions do you all have? Yes?
Quick question on that. So in year five, great that we're hitting numbers in black. One of the big drivers of that is we don't have a step increase here. So the step increase is zero that year. Year six and seven, are there big numbers or is it pretty quiet for a couple of years?
Well, again, we're getting further and further out, so it's, it's a lot, but if you look at, if you look at, and I did look at six, and I asked myself, okay, so what are we looking at in terms of an increase in expenditures? Assuming revenue is the same assumption. So with expenditures, if we continue with expenditures at that amount, this is gonna increase by another 214,000. So I thought, okay, what if we just have expenditures equal revenues, current expenditures and current revenues? So we will have zero, deficit zero.
Okay, bass, go back to the mic, okay.
If you can, hand me your pockets.
Yeah. So, so what that means is that 214 right there, we can increase expenditures by 214. And that puts the percentage of increase at about, as I recall, 3%. Now, we can also say, what was the other thing I looked at? Oh, so let's assume now, not only do we not create this, an additional surplus, because what we've been doing is actually adding 214 on a surplus that's already 214. So we could actually spend up to 4% more in terms of expenditures in that year alone. And what we'd be doing is just bringing this number down and keeping the 7363. Bottom line is, yes, it could, the expenditures will increase, and once we are at a point where we're not relying on fund balance, we would expect that basically expenditures are gonna be whatever revenue is. It'd be a little bit less possibly if we have to add a little bit to the fund balance each year, but it might be a little bit more if we decide we don't need as much in the fund balance. So...
Yeah, I think that's the other piece, is as you get closer and closer than the five years, you relook your fund balance assumptions, and either one of those contingency buckets can go down, you know, or up. But I mean, I think it's more likely that certainly the revenue versus expense one is more likely to get tighter, and then the other one is kind of a function of where we are with the capital. And as long as there's not a very large expense coming, I think it's probably gonna stay fairly consistent at kind of that 300,000 level.
So then, by year six, you're saying we're not drawing from our fund balance anymore to balance our budget?
Correct.
So then, we should be, we should actually be spending almost exactly what we're bringing in?
Correct. And I would add to that, actually, in year five, while we're spending less than what we bring in, in year five is actually the first year where we're not tapping into fund balance, because we create that surplus to build what has been a lowered fund balance, lower than the threshold that's been established to get that end of the financial. But year six is, is the year. And we're past the jump step stuff, you know? We're gonna have 5.5 million dollars worth of capital expenditures, we're gonna have to sit down and talk about how we deal with those, and other issues that we don't know about right now. But it's, it's a plan so that we don't find ourselves in year two, looking at having cuts. And by doing, starting now, you know, by looking at this and saying, okay, let's try to keep it to 4.442,000, then, you know, we're easing into all this. So, any other questions?
Can we have copies of this?
Yes, everything. In fact, if you want to, oh, yeah, we'll get you a copy of it, I can get you a copy of this, I'll send it out today, tomorrow. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Some questions. The 3.4 increase on the revenue side and the 2.2 increase on the expenditure side, that was based on the last three years of actions?
No. 3.4 represents, the, the numbers here for revenue are actual numbers. So, previous year is our actual budgeted number. The 29858 is the actual proposed budgeted number for this year. That represents an increase of 3.4057.
Didn't you use those numbers each year to sort of project out what?
Yes.
Right. So those numbers, did they come from, did I hear you say that you calculated those based in the last three, four years?
No, those two numbers, we approved a budget for this year that had revenue of 28,875,000 and $1.
Yeah, okay, so there's two things going on here. One is, that's the revenue, in, in order to carry out the budget over five years, we just made that assumption, and we just kept it steady, as opposed to making a guess over each year.
So the revenue number was...
No, so that's what we did for, when we're doing the year over year over year look.
Right.
But that's not what we're doing when we're saying, well, how much contingency do we need? And so, that's where we looked in the past to say, okay, well, there was this much of a difference each year in the past between our budget and that. Right? And so, we were doing a backwards look in terms of estimating probabilities and coming up with a dollar amount, so that we could apply that against the probability of distribution to come up with a contingency number. With, because we're assuming, those aren't, they're not necessarily gonna stay the same, but it's hard to predict exactly what they're, they're gonna be. So when doing like a year over year snapshot for one view, we just kept it the same. But for coming up with, well, how much do we need to save to, to cover contingency, which is the more likely, there's, they're not always gonna be like that. Right? They're not always gonna be steady year over year. So how do we cover for that? And so, that's why we did the look back. So we did the, really, it was two years of, it was the last two years, three of, you know, there was a huge difference.
Let me ask my question differently. The 3.04 and the...
3.405, or, wait, that's a typo.
Are you asking, Jim, like, how did they derive that percentage? Was it an average of the last three years? Because that's a constant that you have over the next five years.
The 3.4?
The 3.4 percentage.
The other number is a typo.
Right, so that, 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 assuming the percentage of increase that you're holding constant over five years, how did you derive that? Was that a one-year percent? Or is that the average of the last three, four years trend of what the increase was? Is that what you're asking, Jim?
That, plus the variability that you talked about.
Okay. So, so specifically with regard to 3.4, that is the increase that the proposed budget revenue for 2021 increases over the budgeted revenue for 1920. This number increased over that year. And that just comes from, well, it has been budgeted.
It's a one-year look.
Now...
That's, that's a one-year look, yes.
Right. So, so going forward...
Was your accountability for the variability?
So not, not, not indeterminate 3.4, the 2.24. The variability does not, does not factor into that.
So you might say, why don't we take an average of three or four or five years? Okay. In revenue, we've had increases due to exceptions. We had earlier year increases due to exceptions for retirement. We don't have all those exceptions. My feeling is, is that would throw things off.
Right.
Because on the expenditure side, what we're doing is, we're not looking at anything. What we're saying is, here's the assumption we're making about available revenue, here's what we know we have in terms of fund balance, we only have so much we can spend. This is how it all works out.
Okay. So the revenue side is a projection based on a one-year...
And I believe, I believe an optimistic front fact.
Not conservative.
I wouldn't make it high. I wouldn't make it high.
Correct, yeah. I would agree. A one-year extrapolation of revenue, and then you simply took the expenses and you created a model which allowed us to get to a balanced budget in five years?
No. So, in the model, the revenue also changes over time. So there's two, so where we just use the one-year, one-year thing, the 3.4, that's based on one year, the 2.24 is also based on one year. And that's just so we have a, like, a single number going forward for the purposes of this. That was not used to come up with, to put into the probability model that's looking at how things will change and what do we need for, to manage our risks.
So the expense side and the revenue side, we just take the last year's to this year's?
On the expense side, if I could correct on the expense side, once we determine the revenue number, so we're clear on how that got developed, right? Okay. So how did the expense get developed? Well, I have my spreadsheet, and I go to year five, and I, and all this stuff follows, right? So when I make a change, you know, it, it follows. If I say, well, we're gonna expect more revenue, I wanna change the revenue percentage, everything's gonna change. At the end of year five, I need to see two things. I needed to see fund balance in excess of 763, and I needed to see a surplus. And I just put a number in, and it's the same number every year. Put a number in there and I keep them changing, a little higher, a little lower, until that number produced the result where we were at 763 and we were, we were at a surplus. So that's how that number got through to July.
Okay. It's less than a one-year on the expense side, then?
No, no, it is, yeah. On the revenue side.
But the expense, what we backed into, what, what would we have to have over five years to get us to...
What's the, what can we expect to be able to spend based on a limited amount of revenue? A limited amount of fund balance. How much, how are we limited in fund balance? Well, that's what, that's what this is all about, to say, we know we have 2.5, and that can change, based on how we did this year. But based on what we know right now, this is how much we have available to use over the five years, at one point in time.
I'm curious, is that 2.2, how does that compare to actual expenditure?
Oh, it's lower.
From last year?
It's lower.
It's lower, okay.
It's lower.
So that's good, that's the gotcha, not in a bad way, that's the...
Think about it, how else are we gonna get to a point where we've had deficits and we're not gonna have a deficit? And we've gotta, you know, we've, we've gotta do it by reducing our expenditure, I mean, our, our use of the fund balance and do it in time so that...
Do you roughly know what that number was for last year and this year?
I, I don't know, Chris, do you know what? We've looked at historic, I don't, we're not real bad here.
Would be the actual expenditures?
I would say it's...
Just budget to budget number?
Well, I, we've looked, the analysis, analyses that we've done have been actuals.
But budget to budget or actual to actual?
Actual, actual, that's what we looked at. When we did, when he did, Jude was doing his risk analysis.
How much did our expenses increase as far as percent...
And I say actual.
From 1920 to 2021, which we have?
1920? Right after, I don't have those exactly.
No, 19... No, 19 slash 20 to 21.
I'm like. That's a hell of a projection.
So three-something probably.
Right. So it's, it's three-something, which simply means we need to make cuts.
Right.
To get down to.
And take it simply.
More efficiently spend.
If you're, if we're regularly spending more, and we had some surpluses, but if we typically are spending more than we're bringing in, you have to either increase your operating decreases, expenditures, through a combination of the two. And it's tough for us to raise revenue. Maybe there are some things that come down the pipe. And once we have those things in place, we'll come back and we, we review this and we can make some changes.
Revenue, we're severely handcuffed on how we can increase it. And then on the other end, the state could choose to pull anything at any point where they talk about the transportation subsidy. At some point, that's more optimal, $400,000. So if you can account for $400,000, anyway, with our real estate cap, we went up 12 million and assessed property value through years. We went up 7 million last year. They showed us last year, I was like, okay, we should be around 7 million based on the percentages we used. We go up 3 million. So that's going to happen with what we have coming in real estate value. So even the property assessments can be a wild card with that. You know, we've had really good delinquent tax collections that we didn't have previously.
I think we can do that, yeah. But at least with something like.
You don't know how to go to.
That's true. But it's time.
People have their taxes or their delinquencies to collect.
Yeah.
But it helps on the other end on these financial curves.
But, you know, on the revenue side, just to piggyback on what Chris is saying, with the biggest item is property tax. We know what the assessed values are before the final budget's passed.
Before the final.
We, we know what our balance rate's going to be. We know these, so those numbers, we can be pretty good with those numbers. We can get very close to those numbers because we know what the variables are to calculate. So we have stuff.
Chris brought a great point about the variability of the revenue side. Is there a way to capture via the risk analysis?
I was trying.
The state and the, do we just have a bigger?
Yeah. So that's what we, that's, that's what we did when we did the risk analysis is we looked in the past and said, how does that vary on the revenue side, just like we did it on the expense side and then took that into account?
But even beyond historical, we just know that the state process and the federal process can be wildly variable. And we have zero control over it. So it feels like there's an inherent increased risk in those revenue streams. Is there a way to assign that increased risk?
I think that's where you get it. I mean, you know, you're changing your probability from P50 to something else. Now, if we're going to be more pessimistic on our outcome, what that means is a greater reserve in fund balance, which means even lower expenditures, which means not 442, we're only going to use 250,000 fund balance now. So.
Unless this is setting ground, we're going to look at this every year, any cash, you know, make adjustments where we would need to.
And you could do that. What you would do is you look at whatever that, like whether it's the federal funding or whether it's property revenue and you look at it and you say, well, when we looked at it, we said, it'll never go down. You know, whatever we said in that case, it's 100% on the downside, on the positive side, it could be 102% of that. And so you would just change that number and you rerun the model. It'll take into account.
One question on this slide is the note of capital, the next five years, 662. We sort of backed that out of our fund balance to do the calculation of what's left. Historically, we've just paid for that capital a little bit each year out of our operating budget. So is that kind of sort of double dipping that?
I don't think, my recollection is we had not budgeted any of this in the current budget. We haven't budgeted anything correctly. Like here, here's an example. Dennis and I talked about the state of Carnegie. It's like, we have put a little bit into capital area and as the year goes on, we like to see where we're at at that point in our new schedule. So some of the things, we're going to buy those stores in, done at Carnegie for 14,000. We're going to do the state for 23,000. We think we can get some of the paving done this year, this year's budget. But we've never sat there and said, okay, we have this, at least in the two years I've been doing this, we you're kind of two and a half and I jumped in and out of the 18, 19 budget. We've never sat there and allocated and said, hey, we're putting this money towards these capital projects and said, okay, we're doing these $150,000 worth of capital projects this year. Now, we did with the ESCO project with the barn and such because we knew that was coming and we had the number, we had the numbers out for the 18, 19 years of a barn, but I mean, one of the things I would suggest, if we're going to start moving forward with these projects, we got to determine, yes, we're doing them and add that into the budget at that point.
And another way to look at this would be, okay, this is something we always just had in our regular expenditures. So we, we'll take it out. So now we have more money that we can have available, which means our expenditure percentage will go up. But that 662 is inherent in that number. And by taking it out like we have, what we're saying is, we know we're going to spend this over the next five years. It doesn't have to be spent evenly. It can be spent a little bit in year one, it can be spent a lot in year one, whatever. By putting it out like this, it puts the burden on expenditures. It's out in schloss. It's going to be spent either way, so it may account for it either way. I would say that doing it that way is not going to change the 442 for this year, that number, because it's still.
I would, I would agree with leaving it there, calling it out, that means you're not going to forget about it. I would then say that would also apply to that we're going to have a little bit of extra money in our operating budget. Because we would normally, you normally come just to begin the year and say, I've got this number of things I want to do. The budget you get is.
I'm sorry.
30%. We're going to, we're gently double dipping now on that number, I think, but I think calling it.
We're not double dipping. So let's talk about this because this is important.
Okay.
How do you see us double dipping? Where, this is.
I don't mean that double-ish, but I'm just saying like.
No, 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 no.
The last five years, those, these kind of capital things that we've talked about, 80% of them get done, not every year, but we spread them out, concrete, those are going to enter our operating budget. So if we're looking at our sort of traditional expenditures, baked into that is a slow progression of getting these things done. So I like the idea of carving it out and calling it out, accounting for it. But I think that does tell us that we'll have, maybe it's 100 grand a year that we would have been.
This number here for expenditures.
Yep.
There's not, is not, there's not an extra 100 in there because we have 662. And you can, you can look at it that way if you want to, but the bottom line is, this number is not being driven by expenditures in capital, in the capital area. Whether, where, where, whatever we're doing with that, this number is being derived by saying, here are the available funds for expenditures and that's being allocated over five years. You want to put that into the amount?
That's interesting.
You know what I mean?
That's interesting.
So it's, it's being added, it's adding three, two and four to get nine. You can add four, two and three, these two get nine. So. Anything else? All right. So again, we've got to relook at this on a regular basis. But I think this strongly shows us that we cannot sustain a budget with a $900,000. We're using $900,000 as a fund balance to meet our expenditures. So we're going to have to look at ways to, to get that difference down to the 442 range. And that becomes the next discussion, how do we do that 442 number?
I also think it's a reputable process, which gives us, you know, a consistent way to look at it year over year and reassess.
I agree. Any other follow-up questions? I have two last points, I guess. One, one is a, I, I, a suggestion that we gently, or I would suggest that we gently reposition the effort. I think the model, the, the effort, the insights are phenomenal and something we haven't looked at in this way before. And I think it's going to help us. I think it helps us. I think it's great. We've had a surplus the last two years and that wasn't by accident. It was Gary and then Joe and now John carrying that, that banner forward. It was because of, we didn't have this nice model, we didn't have the risk analysis, but we had been knowing that we were under watch. So we're making changes, we're trying to make them as painless as possible for our students and for our community. But we have surpluses the last two years, very, very small ones and ones that I think we all agree are not, probably not sustainable given how we got there. We got there, anyway, not sustainable. We need a, a different model to help us plan out multiple years. But we haven't had a significant deficit since when we were doing renovations. 2014, 2015, we had a $3 million deficit, but we were intentionally spending money on renovating our building. So that was an intentional deficit. That was when we realized that the pension crisis was blowing up in our face and we had to make some changes. The next year, we had a $600,000 deficit. That was still a huge deal. We didn't, we couldn't sustain that. It was in that year when we had serious conversations, that's when we started making staff changes, allowing attrition to happen. The following year, deficit was 200,000. And then last year, two years ago, we had a small surplus, last year we had a small surplus. So I think your points are all spot on. The tool is probably something that Chris and the team can use and I think we embrace conceptually and we shouldn't be looking at something like that. I look at this as, the subtle repositioning, I look at this as, we've been doing this effort for four-ish, five years now. But we've been doing it maybe in an ad hoc way without a nice tool to help us look at it each year and retool and recalculate where we are. So subtle reposition. But I think the spirit of what you're saying, we've already been doing and that's how we achieved surpluses the last two years, small surpluses. This maybe gives us the tool to think longer term and maybe gives us some, some discipline to stay on the plane, which helps us get into that balanced, true balanced budget without touching the fund balance.
But the follow-up on that. It almost sounds like there's an argument to say, based on the trend, we don't need to use any fund balance this year.
But I know that's not what you're saying.
And that's what I think we need to be careful with.
I agree.
So that's why this is trying to look at things with a longer view and just to say, based on the assumptions that were made. The one was, well, first, we, we did the analysis. We identified solid numbers in terms of what we're looking at the next five years for capital expenditures. Then Jude went through, did his risk analysis and instead of putting away three or five or 10% of our expenditures and making sure we have that, we're looking at something in the 2% range. So it's a minimal amount that we're keeping there. You take those two numbers, put it aside, you have a million on the dough. How do we use that to get to a balanced budget? And if you accept that as the number and then you accept, we're going to see increases at a very generous 3.4% rate each year, which I don't think will be that high, but assume that. It all falls out as to what we can do in terms of expenditures and what we can use in terms of fund balance. So I say that number of 442 as an actual number is a solid number that we should consider. And I understand what you're saying, but if you look at 600,000 right now, over the last two years, the average that we were off was 300, 600,000. 900 right now, that means based on the two-year trend, we're still going to have a $300,000 deficit this year. I feel more comfortable relying on this data to come up with our, our schedule and to say, look. I, I think frankly, we can get to 442. I think that there are, there's some tightening that can be done and analyses that can be done in the budget that we can get there. We've, we've looked at some other opportunities recently. Dr. Kreider's identified some opportunities, Chris as well. So I'm optimistic we can get to that number. But I think, I think that's, that's what we've got to hold to. To put anything else in there and even say, well, we always do better. We put any number in there, we have to be prepared that that could be the number. If we're going to budget a $900,000 deficit and we only have an $800,000 deficit, we figured we finished better than planned, but we've used 800,000 of a million one and that's not acceptable. So if we're going to budget a number that big, then show me the plan that's going to get us to where we're here in five years. That, that's how I see it. So I'm optimistic. I think it can happen. It's just being conscious of the decisions that we make and make them surgically and specifically. Any other? Yes?
The plan, I think, I'm optimistic and that we have the tool that wants, and it's, it's a complicated tool. So I don't, you did a, you guys did a great job playing together, but it's not an easy tool, I guess. And you, like, it'll be less than time and I imagine you and Chris and John will be talking and digesting.
And if I could just something, anything you guys want. I mean, we've got stuff, we didn't go into everything because it is a ton of paper.
Right.
But everything is there. So go ahead.
But just my point is it'll take a while for all of us to digest it, understand it, embrace it. And Chris and John will, we're hoping you'll connect with them and they'll digest it and embrace it. And then we'll need to apply that 2% to the actual expenditures and that'll be the more challenging part.
And that 2%, right? That's not extensive, no, that's just saying, it's saying.
It's the love.
We're going, we're going to use the same amount year after year, not counting for the, the jump.
Right.
Right? So we're going to use the same amount because we're going to say, you know, we don't want to use all the increase this year and then only have 1% in the next year. So John and Chris may say, you know what? We need more expenditure money this year. We do have a plan. We can get by with 1% in two years afterwards.
Right.
That's right. But we need a plan. In five years, at the threshold, we don't use a fund balance. Anything that does that, I support 100%. Anything else? Thank you very much.
So. I like this because it's guidance to our plan. I have been stressed out every year about our finances and that we're going deeper without a plan. Every year we're scrambling to just last minute do things, which I don't think is fair either for curriculum or for staff, like these last minute things. I felt bad the one year with Dennis, like he cut out like over $100,000 to like help us out that year. But we can't, we can't, we have all these things that need to happen in the district. So I was getting to a point where I was going to start, I'll vote, I have previously voted no on a budget and I would again if we don't have a plan. So at least this makes me feel like we have guidance. And I also like it too because we're not telling administration how to spend the money, you know, like as a board. We're not telling them, buy these books, have these many pencils, have this many aims, like that's going, that's their expertise. But at least this is kind of giving us like, this is our minimum, this is how we'll ride out this huge cost. Because that's the biggest thing that was terrifying me is this huge jump step. And at least this kind of gives, it helps me see past it that yes, it's going to hit us in a couple of years but we can start pulling out from it if we do some of these things, which is the house. So there's, there's two things here. I think the first one is, is this an approach we're okay with protecting the fund balance? Given this analysis, it's very, very, you want to carve out simulation of risk, which I think is great because I submit we're at school. But just, so that's the first one. And then the second part of it is establishing like, is this the amount that will hang by? So those are the two things I think are in front of us as a board. Do we agree on this approach? And you guys are working with Chris, I assume?
We're talking with Chris or we're talking with John, talking with Dennis?
Well, I mean, like working with, not just talking to, but like with. I would expect superintendent, business manager are on this. Because then I'll feel better. Then I won't be so saying no on the budget. Even though if like if budget passes, I'm the only no, I'll do it because I don't feel comfortable not having a plan.
Well, we want a plan that has continuity so that if there are any changes in this dynamic, that somebody else knows how to apply it.
So I just don't want to be scrambling every year like, okay, what are we going to do this year? And all we did presented with a list of hard choices and then a skinny Yoda. That was not fun with the French class and having everybody come in. It's like, I know my son's in that class. I didn't want to cut it either, but having to balance stuff. So at least this, it gives us time too, that that year's coming with that huge increase. So time for administration to think about how they're going to ride, spend more efficiently in those years to meet what we're setting as a minimal for a fund balance.
Well, as you said from the outset, this exercise is an exercise in answering the question, how much fund balance is the safety? And I absolutely agree. I mean, it's, Chris and John are the educational leaders, educational experts here. This is why I'm happy to say. And I, but I think the board in its role is looking, being, looking out to responsibly manage the limited assets of the district. It's in, it's in their, it's their right to say, we're not going to use, we're not going to do it that way. This is, it's our right to say, no to increase because you've told us other than public interest, which we've never done for a long time, but I may talk to that. Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
One quick comment for the public. If it doesn't make sense why we would have a surplus two years in a row and be worried about having deficit or having to do all of what you described. Because we have, in some cases, fixed costs that are known to be going up. So a jump step, a given point, we have, those are known, they're, they're in contract. But we have a cap on our revenue potential with the state. The state passed a law 10 years ago that limits the amount of revenues we can raise. So 30 years ago, if we had huge cost increases, we go back to the public and say, we're raising our taxes by 22%. And you would be mad and you would lock this out of box, but there wasn't anything you could do that year, fix it. So the state passed.
96, I think, Act 1.
96 passed a law that capped our ability to raise taxes beyond an index that they set. So in theory, we, any district has the ability, we can give out raises to everybody, we can buy new trucks and build new buildings, but we can't raise the revenue to pay for it. And so that's the sort of the danger we're in. So we have a fixed income that we're working on at our house, but we can go buy all the cars we want and buy our kids all how we want. And so that's the sort of the danger we're in. So we have a fixed income that we're working on at our house, but we can go buy all new cars we want and buy our kids all happy stuff. And that's the, that's the dilemma. So that was my, my version of our, of our goal.
Appreciate that.
Okay. John, any other comments or?
No, thank you for, Jude and David for putting that together. I think it does, it helps put things into perspective. It helps put a model in place to use as, as guidance as we're moving forward to, to make decisions on what we're most comfortable with, with the fund balance. So I think it helps put things into perspective for people. And like Jim had said, it, it may take a little bit while for some of us to digest it and really put it into, into perspective, but thank you both.
So we have another gentleman here. Anything else on budget? If not, we'll move on to old business. Any director of any old business they want to bring up? Uh, any director of new business they want to bring up? Open forum, any members of the audience have open forum questions, comments?
I just got one. Sorry.
It's okay.
I, I don't remember which meeting, but several meetings ago, when you were talking about mitigating cost in the roof and, you know, stretching out this life expectancy. Some mentioned had been made about maybe doing some solar panels and maybe as part of that, we might be able to get some funding because it's green. And then you'd have to replace the rubber stuff anyway, so maybe be covered. I don't know if any further research had been done on that, any progress?
We've done some further research and then Mr. McDade set up a time, I believe, for someone to come out and give us some additional information.
He's, he's actually a stagnant solar company, I think that Tag, Tagge is doing research right now on our property. The best options for solar panels for this building and looking at Carnegie and Crafton too. And I don't think Crafton's viable for anything, but maybe possibly Carnegie, we might be able to do something too. So he's looking at it. He has not got back to me with his results yet, so waiting to hear from him.
I think that would be cool. I think it'd be a lot of good press too, you know, always use good press.
Practical and cool.
We've looked at the property. Are we only looking at putting these units on roofs?
No, no, when I talked to, when I talked to the gentleman, I told him to survey all the property and to see, you know, if it, if, not just the roof is a viable option for different areas, you know.
So maybe we could create a huge solar panel farm on the ball field.
I've heard of solar panel trees recently too, where it looks kind of like a cell tower, but they're little solar panels and they can be moved around so they collect.
Who has numerous fifty foot towers all, all throughout that ball field, generating electricity.
Do you mind sharing your names for the record, please?
My best and I, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Any other open forum comments? Nope. Marissa, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Do you want a second? Thank you.
Hi.
Opposed, nay?
David.